Our fourth panel will give us the perspective of law enforcement, emergency care personnel, and probation supervisors. Our first witness will be Captain Oswaldo Tianga. Captain Tianga is a 20-year veteran of the Broward County Sheriff's Office, who currently serves as the Court Services Commander responsible for the day-to-day security and operations of all circuit and county courts in Broward County. Additionally, Captain Tianga serves as the agency's synthetic drug expert. Dr. John Cunha.
Cunha.
Cunha is the Vice Chief of the Emergency Department of Holy Cross Hospital in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and is also the Medical Director of the Emergency Medical Services for the city of Oakland Park, Florida. Finally, we will hear from Dr. Lisa Rawlings. Dr. Rawlings is the Chief of Staff at the Court Services and Offender Supervision Agency for the District of Columbia, which is a federal executive branch agency that provides supervision and support services to adult offenders on probation, parole, and supervised release in the District of Columbia. Captain Tianga?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, you're welcome. Well, thanks for having me. I appreciate you guys' time and attention to an issue that I'm very passionate about. Like you said, I've worked with the Broward Sheriff's Office for almost 20 years. I started very young, and most of my career's been in narcotics. And it wasn't until recent times where we became involved with these synthetic drugs. And I hear all these questions that have been posed to me many, many times. You know, Dr. Cunha and I, and I'll get into that later, we were sitting back there poking each other, wanted to raise our hand, like, my turn. I think I have the answer to that question. So hopefully, I could be of some use to the panel. But as we, as what we do know about synthetic drugs has been around for a long time. It hasn't hit us as hard, but you know, even in the last presentation, they were talking about methadone. And methadone was my first introduction, not really first, but when it started to get so severe. Methadone was basically a drug when the streets was referred to as molly. Still a very common term used on the streets, although methadone is hardly found like it used to be. But molly was known as pure MDMA. MDMA being ecstasy, and molly had more of a euphoric high, it had more of a amphetamine-type high. So consumers or drug dealers would say, "Well, molly's just pure MDMA, and that's why you get this more, this higher high," if you will, which was completely false. It did give you the euphoric feeling that the user was intending to get, and because it was stronger, they said it was pure MDMA. Wasn't the case. As molly evolved, and the government caught up with it, molly was mass-produced in China. China outlawed the production of methadone, so they needed a new substance. And this is when they started to mess with the molecular structure of drugs. And that's how, at least in Broward County, that's where I serve, that's how we were introduced into alpha PvP, something known as flaca. Alpha PvP or flaca, again, had a tremendous amphetamine-type property to it, a tremendous high, and if consumed orally, like molly mostly was, like a pill, you just got even higher. So now it became a more pure and more potent. The problem is users now be noted that you could smoke it, inject it, snort it. It was a one-size-fits-all drug. And based on how you consumed it, it gave tremendous, tremendous effects. And not only tremendous effects, but tremendous confusion. Not only tremendous confusion to us in this room, as it's doing today, but to the drug dealer who didn't know what he was selling, to the drug user that didn't know what the appropriate dosage was, to the law enforcement officer on the street who encountered it and didn't know exactly what it was. And not only to that, but to the street, the street-level tests, the field tests that we use on the street. It would give false positives. Flaca, for example, field tests positive even today for cocaine, heroin, and amphetamines. So because it was so potent, because it was so strong, from a law enforcement's perspective, and from many professionals out there, we would give testimony that it was all drugs. It was just every drug mixed together, and that's why we were getting the side effects that we were getting, and it was causing such devastation because we had no idea what was about to happen or what was currently happening. It looked like many other drugs. It basically looked like whatever the drug user wanted it to look like. If you wanted it to look like marijuana, it could be broken down and sprayed onto the Damiana plant. If you wanted it to look like cocaine, you could make it in powder form and snort it. If you wanted heroin, it dissolved in water. So whatever you wanted it to look like, it looked like. And then from a price perspective, a kilogram of flaca at the time was about $1,500. And you could say very comfortably that flaca is 10 times more potent than cocaine. At the same time cocaine was being sold on the streets, a kilogram of cocaine was $30,000. So here you are, buying a substance off of the internet at $1,500 a kilo, in contrast to cocaine, which is $30,000 a kilo. And the difference was in flaca. First of all, when flaca was first introduced, it wasn't even illegal. But even when it was, even today, the penalties are so small that it's worth the risk. And it's the mailman that delivers your drugs, not some drug dealer in the middle of a bad neighborhood who was probably going to rob you or sell you some fake stuff. This was guaranteed delivery, and if it didn't deliver, you call China and tell them they didn't deliver the substance, and they deliver it again. So there were tremendous, tremendous problems with that. On the street, crack cocaine, for example, $20 rock of crack cocaine keeps you high for 10, 15, 20 minutes, tops if it's good stuff. A $5 rock of, a $5, which is a smaller rock of flaca, keep you high for four to six hours. So now, and then the side effects that came along with it, we coined the term Broward Sheriff's Office. It caused $5 insanity because of the side effects, which I'll get into next. Basically, it turned people into zombies, and our streets were flooded with them. All ages, all ethnic groups. There was no target. I know somebody used the term target. Who are we targeting here? There was nobody to target. We had kids ordering this off the internet, just like we had long-term drug dealers. There was no, the, what you needed to be a drug dealer, let's say 10, 15 years ago, where you had to be involved with the family and start from the bottom. And the typical drug dealer starts on the street corner, and then he moves up to mid-level drug dealing. He stays there for a while, and then finally, he gets his chance, if he doesn't go to jail or get killed, he gets his chance to be a large-scale drug distributor, which takes lots of money. Somebody could be your overnight internet drug dealer selling kilograms of amounts of drugs with very little money and very little risk. Because, again, when flaca first came out, it wasn't illegal. And now we get into the side effects, or the effects. The effects, and I'm not sure if you guys spoke about this earlier, but it was basically, like I said, zombie effects. Side effects of flaca, the number-one thing it did was increased body temperature. Because it increased body temperature, people would take their clothes off. So now we have communities with people running around naked, acting very psychotic, paranoid. So it, I'm sorry, it overwhelmed us. It really did, and we didn't know what was going on. And that's how we were introduced into the hospital, because we had nothing to do. These people were not criminals. They had committed no crime. They consumed the drug already. And now they're out in this zombie-like state of mind. The only thing we had to turn to were the hospitals. So here you go with law enforcement trying to subdue these individuals who are paranoid already, using basic police techniques, which always encompassed some level of force to inflict pain to get somebody to comply. Well, in this, in this state of mind, they have no feeling of pain. And I tell you that firsthand, boots on the ground, where we've twisted the arm of a female who's 105 pounds, and her arm pops, and everybody lets her go, and she stands up and is still swinging her pop, an arm that's popped out of her socket. So we were confused. Confused, we didn't know what the drug was. We didn't know how to diagnose it. We didn't know what was, what was happening to our community. And now we have the community asking us, "What's flaca? What's flaca?" And like I said, initially, we were telling them, "Oh, it's a combination of heroin. It's a combination of cocaine, crack. It's all put in one." But it never made sense to me because it was so much cheaper than all those other drugs in an original form. So for them to sell those drugs in a combination would obviously make it more expensive, which it didn't. So the main effects, or the worst effect, was that, excited delirium. It gave people superhuman strength. And initially, when we approached our communities, we had actually a picture of Superman, of somebody on a drug, and we changed our momentum because we didn't want kids. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that was a timer to think who was drugs, but...
There's a red light.
I apologize, that wasn't worth it.
That's okay, but you can, you know, finish your remarks if you have a way of wrapping it up.
I'll just, I'll close in saying that currently, and the challenges that you're facing is the juice is worth the squeeze. If you're going to be a drug trafficker, a drug distributor in today's, in today's society, you be, you will be a synthetic drug dealer because the penalties are just not there. State attorneys, federal prosecutors, we do in Broward County and the state of Florida, do have a law, the analog law. It's the umbrella law that covers any, everything. Nobody wants to prosecute it. Nobody wants to move forward because it becomes a battle of the sciences and a battle of the unknown. You have, you're forcing attorneys to become doctors and scientists, and introducing this and trying to sell that to a jury becomes almost impossible. So currently, right now, for the drug dealer, the juice is worth the squeeze. It's much cheaper, much more potent, and which makes it much more important for us to make the penalties stiffer, like you said, on these drugs, so we deter these people from selling these drugs that we don't know, and go back at a minimum to sell the drugs that we do know how to enforce, and we do know how to fight. Thank you, and I apologize for going over time.
That's, no, no.
No problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner, and thanks, Ozzy. I'm Dr. John Cunha. I'm an emergency room doctor. I practice emergency medicine. I'm also a emergency medical services medical director for EMS, so fire rescue and training fire rescue in the area around Fort Lauderdale. I'm also the, one of the advocates in Broward County that went out with Ozzy and went literally from churches to schools to get the word out about these synthetic drugs. And that's how I met Ozzy. So taking off from his story, he's finding these things on the streets, and they're devastating the communities. He doesn't know what they are. He doesn't know how to treat them. And my paramedics actually came to me in November of 2014 and said, "What is this flaca stuff, and what do we do about it?" So I made a PowerPoint that ended up on YouTube to teach paramedics how to treat excited delirium. And somehow, that's how I became involved in these, in these talks going forward. So let's say you have this 110-pound woman on the street who it takes six deputies to take down. What happens to them afterwards? Well, I'm the one that gets them in the emergency room afterwards. And this is where even the story sort of begins to the devastation that it causes these people, and it causes our emergency health system, okay? So take a typical EMS run, fire rescue run for a medical patient. In our county, it takes between 20 minutes and 40 minutes to go see the patient, pick them up, bring them to the hospital, drop them off, and get back into service. That's just a usual run. If you have to wait on scene for the scene to be safe, you have to wait for five deputies to take a person in excited delirium who can't think straight, can't talk straight, is acting crazy, is naked, is slimy because they're sweaty, is taking swings at you and thinks that you're there to harm them, which is what these synthetic drugs do across the classes, the cathinones, the cannabinoids, the other synthetics. They all have a stimulant effect, a speed-like effect, amphetamine effect. And when these patients overdose, they are critically ill, and they can't help themselves. So you take a patient who, you have to have scene safety, you have five or six people taking them down, and then they have to be strapped to a board and then medicated to safely go to the hospital. That takes an entire long process. So now you're talking about EMS runs of 90 minutes, taking crews off the streets. So instead of 30 minutes, they're taking three times as long just to drop these single patients off. That's just the beginning. Now I have a patient in my emergency room who's flailing around, thrashing. They are a risk to themselves for harm. They're a risk to my staff for harm. They're a risk to me for harm. And often, they take resources of the entire emergency department away from other people to take care of them and save their lives. Then, if I'm successful in saving their life using a lot of different medical techniques, including intubation medications such as ketamine and other benzodiazepine drugs to knock them down, then they often spend several days in the emergency, in the hospital admitted, or even in the intensive care admitted. Then, when they're awake enough and out of their delirium, some of them sign themselves out against medical advice, go back on the streets and do it again. Or if they are successful in their lives being saved and they get out successfully discharged from the hospital, they then end up going back on the streets and doing it again because these drugs across the board, again, have a very addictive potency. We'll have patients that tell us, "I took flaca. It was the worst high of my life. But I go and do it again because I just can't help it." So Commissioner Breyer and Barkow, you asked a question to the previous panel about what can you do for these, these broad chemical classifications. At the very least, you have to have these broad chemical classifications banned wholesale as broad chemical classifications. But also, look at the Florida analog law, the Analog Act, which really helped Ozzy and his team take some of these chemicals off the street and prosecute. Because you can't do it individually because they just go from drug to drug to drug.
I thought he just told us that no one wants to use that law because it becomes a battle of the experts.
It's, it's the best thing you have, and maybe you can tweak that a little bit to get to where you need to go. But it has to be broad classifications. Often, we don't even know from our drug testing what these patients took. Because our, our drug testing is only limited in the emergency room. Sometimes, we have to wait for them to wake up for them to tell us what they took. So it's very resource-intensive. It is dangerous to my staff and the EMS workers and the police officers in the street. But it also, it's devastating to the patients because they have very poor rehab ability after they get out. They're very paranoid, and it's a long-term paranoia. Some of them who have excited delirium actually have renal failure, go on dialysis long-term. They have lung problems. They have cognitive issues, and they can't re-join society. There is a cadre of patients in Broward County that have these things happen. This is not your typical marijuana. This is not your typical cocaine. These things are highly psychoactive, and they're highly long, long-acting results afterwards.
Are they, is part of the problem that the other drugs being illegal, marijuana, or wherever you want to, whatever classification you want to take, those drugs being illegal has now forced the development of this other, of this, of the synthetic?
Correct. Correct. So if you, if you look at, if you, if you take South Florida or Broward County as a microcosm, we had the opiate pill mills. When the opiate pill mills were, were run out of business by making laws, then it became the synthetics, molly, MDMA, methadone. Once that was run out of town, it became flaca and bath salts. Once they were run out of town, now unfortunately, we have the synthetic heroin because that population that wants to get high is going to get high at all costs. When it was easy to get $2 Percocets on the streets, that's what they used. When it was easy to get $3 flaca on the streets, that's what they used. Now it's the synthetic heroin. And they just keep going down the line. They're going to get high no matter what you do unless you interact or keep them from getting high or help them to get off of getting high. Short of that, they're going to take the path of least resistance to get these drugs, and you're just going to keep going down the line, drug after drug after drug after drug.
Dr. Rawlings?
Hey. Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to share our testimony. As I mentioned, my name is Lisa Rawlings. I serve as the Chief of Staff for the Court Services and Offender Supervision Agency. We provide community supervision here in the District of Columbia. And just so that you can understand the impact of synthetic drugs, I just want to talk a little bit about the work that we do and how we approach supervision so we can fully understand and appreciate the impact. Our supervision terms vary from about nine months, 19 months on average for probationers, up to about 12 years for people who are on parole. So we're seeing these individuals day in and day out. For the people at the highest risk, we see them twice a week. And at the lowest levels, it may be once every two months. So we have this ongoing relationship with folks who are involved in the criminal justice system. We do focus on accountability and really promoting individual change. And we use evidence-based approach to supervision that includes a valid and rigorous assessment protocol to determine, determine the likelihood for reoffending. This drives our supervision strategy, which has some of the most stringent contact standards in the nation. We also apply evidence-based supervision strategies for our graduated responses, so sanctions for offenses and incentives for compliant behavior. And our supervision officers employ cognitive behavioral-based interventions in order to interrupt these patterns of thinking and to ultimately change behavior. I wanted to provide that as a context so you can understand how, when synthetic drugs are introduced into this population, the impact that it can have and disrupt and actually undermine our total supervision process. So I want to talk about three different ways in which that happens. First, we've had a lot of discussion about the challenges around detection and testing. In addition to the inability to really have some confidence in the, in the testing protocols because the elements are continually changing, it's also a tremendous cost. So for us, when we have gone to full-scale, universal testing of synthetic drugs, our drug testing costs increase 40% one year over the next. And that's an ongoing cost that we have to absorb. And what we're seeing right now is that for all of, all of the individuals that are tested, all the samples that are tested, we see about a 1% positive rate. And so we can't stand on the fact that maybe the prevalence is declining, but it's just that maybe our protocols are really not keeping pace with the current usage patterns. And this is just for synthetic cannabinoids. We have not even been able to introduce synthetic cathinones or the other elements. In addition, as the compounds are changing, the drug pattern usage are changing as well. So when this was introduced into, to the leadership in 2012, we'd been focused on synthetic cannabinoids. What we found subsequent to that, while we've been chasing synthetic cannabinoids, the, the usage patterns have been changing. And so in DC in particular, they've gone from synthetic cannabinoids to then the cathinones, and now to the synthetic opioids. And so we're still focused on the synthetic cannabinoids. And so kind of constantly trying to stay, you know, to keep pace with these evolving, not just evolving compounds, but then the evolving usage patterns has been a tremendous challenge. In addition to that, when it first came to our attention, synthetic drugs, you know, they were using Scooby snacks and K2, and they were marketed, they looked like Pop Rocks. And what they colloquially referred to them as parole packs, specifically because these were appropriate for people who were on parole or probation because they could not be detected. And so it's almost a perfect opportunity for someone who is under supervision to, to subvert and to undermine the supervision process. So we talked about the challenges of intoxication and abuse and the, the effects that it can have. We're obviously concerned about the safety it can have on our officers, both in the office, because we had even, we even had people reporting to supervision telling their officers that they had used some kind of synthetic substance. And that's how, you know, it kind of was brought to our attention because it was not, it was not something that was illegal at that point in time. So then there's a safety concern when they're going out in a home visits and there's use in the home, in the field. That's, again, presents another concern. And then if we talk about what is the purpose of supervision, it's really to help change behavior. And if we're using these evidence-based strategies that are targeting thinking patterns and behavior, and you have people whose thinking patterns and thinking capacity is undermined, then that's really not going to be very effective. And then again, if we're focused on strict accountability in these other standards, and if we're testing and they're using, and we can't stand confidently on whether or not we can detect if they're testing or not, then it really reinforces, you know, their ability to use these substances. So it presents a number of these challenges. And then again, the treatment, you know, again, is varied. So a previous panelist talked about, you know, kind of addressing the underlying causes of substance use. But then we don't know enough about these compounds to really know if there's any specific kind of intervention that may be needed, or if there's any, you know, specific maybe medications that may help assist in the treatment of it. So in the district, one of the things that we did do when it came to our attention, we pulled together a citywide task force, and we took a very comprehensive approach, which did include legislation. It also included regulation and working with the police department, the health departments as well, to have a really aggressive approach to, to the outlets that did sell synthetic cannabinoids at that point in time. And so we have seen a change in those patterns, but again, the usage patterns have been changing to keep pace. So just in closing, I would like to say that, really, if community supervision is to be a public safety, safety net, then really, the introduction of synthetic drugs, you know, really undermines a fundamental purpose of what we try to do every day.
Captain, I cut you off early. I don't know if you had anything else that you had permitted, saying that you'd like to say. I mean, we've got about 10 more minutes before we need to wrap.
I appreciate it. And they covered it very eloquently. I will say that just the undermining of the drug test kit itself, I have judges, I oversee court services now, and I oversee 104 different judges. And I'll get calls from the courtroom of individuals who are on probation and parole. And the judge knows that this individual is under the influence, has drug tested him in the courtroom, or aside from the courtroom, and they come back completely clean. And I'll pull them aside and talk to them, and they're like, "Hey, I smoked a synthetic. That's all I can tell you. I got eyes," you know. But it definitely happens, and that's why people are turning to synthetics, especially those individuals on probation and parole. Or our kids that are drug tested by their parents, because everybody knows you go to a pharmacy and buy your own drug testing kits, which say they test for synthetics, which they do not. We've had individuals who voluntarily came in so we could drug test them on companies that are trying to sell us test kits for flaca. Said, "Just smoked flaca three days ago." We drug test them, and it comes out completely clean. And it was a 10 out of 10. We tried 10 different products, and none of them tested positive off this. And the difference in cost for a, at least in Broward County, for the general marijuana, cocaine, amphetamine is about $7. And the synthetic one, I believe, was $75. cocaine, amphetamine, is about $7, and the synthetic one, I believe, was $75. So for each person that you're testing, that's the difference in, in numbers, and you can only imagine what that does to a budget when you're trying to drug test so many people.
I wanted to ask about the Florida experience in the analog. The analog is, prosecutions on the analog, you've actually testified in, in state court on using that?
I have not, we haven't even prosecuted one yet. I'll tell you this, one of the things, since you gave me a second, I was, the DEA sent me and a team to China to meet with the Chinese government, and this was when Flaca was so prevalent, we were basically begging them to make Flaca an illegal substance in China. From that trip, they made 116 synthetic substances illegal immediately, before we even arrived to their country, the substances were, were banned. And it read great in the papers, and it was a tremendous accomplishment for us, but there was another thousand that came the next day. Variations are so minute, this molecular, the science behind it is so difficult to comprehend, that there has to be some sort of umbrella that captures it all, and I wish I had the answer for you, but it just changes. By the time we utter it out of our mouths, they've already changed.
I'm sure the next panel will have an answer.
Good.
Looking forward to that one. Could I also say, just one more thing detailing to Dr. Rawlings, in my experience, and a lot of the medical practitioners in Broward County that have dealt with these patients, especially the Flaca and Cathinone patients, they're very poor responders to therapy. They're very poor responders to group therapy because they're very paranoid. For some reason, this class of cathinones causes a paranoia that's long-lasting. So if you send them to an outpatient group setting to get drug rehabilitation, they often can't tolerate it and don't go. So they're, again, resource-intensive even after the fact of their acute intoxication. And that makes them poor candidates for sort of things such as supervised outpatient programs.
I'm not sure if you would have knowledge of this, excuse me, but do you know if, do we have good information about the dose, like the average dose of these things, or is there such high variability that it'll be hard to say what kind of typical dose weights are or measuring it? Because at some point down the line, we'd have to get to that point, and it sounds like there's high variability here, but...
There's no regulation behind it, and she did mention it, that there'll be a bad batch, and we've had it. We've had communities, Oakland Park, Pompano, where everybody's using the drug, but you'll have one specific community that everybody's overdosing in, and we just call it the bad batch. The bad batch today went to, to Oakland Park, or they'll change. So drug dealers in that area will now change the color, and they'll make it pink Flaca, being short for Flaca. They'll start selling pink Flaca in the Oakland Park area, couple people who use it will say, okay, well, this, search for the pink Flaca, because the pink Flaca is the safe one, it gets the highest, and it doesn't cause excited delirium. Well, it just takes the drug dealer down the street, add a little food coloring to his, and now you have pink Flaca ravaging the community, and again, you'll have another section of your community getting extreme, extreme overdoses. I'm talking about multiple overdoses a day, multiple overdoses where he would have to quarantine these people in his hospital, and there's just nowhere more to quarantine them. So we'd get two a day. I'd take them to the hospital, the doc, they would subdue them, paramedics subdue them, take them to the hospital, the hospital, once they wake up, they say, I'm, I'm out of here, they sign their, their release, they come out, they re-overdose again, and we're back in one shift, in one police shift. Multiple times, you'd have one person go to the hospital on an overdose twice.
There's huge batch-to-batch variability. We have some great pictures in the presentation that we give, where they're, they're using, it shows someone making synthetic cannabinoids. And there is what looks like sawdust all over the floor in a 12 by 12 room, and there's someone with an industrial bug sprayer spraying the active ingredient onto this stuff that looks like sawdust. So this batch over here might be very intense, this batch over here may not be, and it's all packaged and sent out. So I, I can't give you a dosing, you know, scheme on that.
Right now, under the analog law, they've, they've mirrored this synthetic drug that it is mimicking. So, for instance, the state law in Florida, four grams of heroin is trafficking, so in turn, four grams, and, and they're having big problems with non-pharmaceutical fentanyl because it didn't capture in all the legal jargon they, they had. So four grams, it would just match it. So if the drug mimics the effect of cocaine, then the trafficking sentences mimic the same of cocaine. It doesn't really work, it's the best thing that they can come up with, because it was literally an emergency, we needed sentencing now. I'm sure it'll get better, but that's, that's where it's at right now.
Are there purity levels? Are there, I mean, if you get a kilo of Flaca, is it, is it, gee, it's 90%? Or is it...
No, not that I know of, I'm no scientist.
It's either got, it either is or it isn't, and that's the...
I'm sure that there is some, you know, one, one box that you get maybe 65%, and one box maybe 75%, but I'm, I'm pretty confident to say that those, the, the drug pusher is not testing his batches to see which one's good.
So it's not cut down as, as some other drugs are cut?
No, they're not. In fact, in, in fact, they're, they're cut, the, the non-pharmaceutical fentanyl is cut down only to make it less potent, because in its purest form, it's too potent for the user to use.
Thank you. We're going to break for lunch, and we'll come back at 1:15. And we really appreciate you traveling here today and your presentations.